So with that, let's uh call to order the December 12th, 2023 meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. And I guess first of all, uh at least for me anyway, a welcome to Britain, sitting at the table at Leeds for the first time.
Sir, appreciate it.
Good, good to see you.
Happy beer.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Or condolences.
Depends on the meeting.
I didn't get to those kinds of meetings later.
Twenty-nine, three-hundred and something days left to go on this.
Yes, so just reuse the signs.
Just reuse, okay, got it.
Actually, I wasn't sure what to do with them. I ordered way too many.
As long as he did put the year on it.
Yeah, I, I think for the last twelve years, Randy Jordan and I have been using the same damn signs. We're just keeping them one person's house. Five years, they go, Randy, I need those signs again. Paid for them once. God backing the teens.
Okay, so first agenda item, meeting minutes from November 22nd. That was our joint meeting with the Select Board.
We'll be straight.
Yep, that's what I'm gonna do. All right, both of you check your emails. You've got one Excel spreadsheet that takes the two tabs. Motion to approve November 27th, 2023, Planning Board Meeting jointly with the Select Board.
Now, the only voting members on this can be you three because you're new and Dick was not there, so.
Yep.
Yeah, we know.
Just.
Do I have a second?
Before I say that, there's one thing I wanted to make sure. Oh, good. Didn't catch the last one. Thank to me for the notice to sell. Sixty-one, because I wanted to make sure that was covered. Perfect, thanks.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Looks fine.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And two abstentions, right?
Yes.
Yes, staying.
Okay.
November 28th minutes.
Yeah. So November 28th.
Oh, I would like to make a motion to accept so that we can have a discussion.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do too.
Corrections.
Okay.
Because I just learned something new when I read this.
Second.
Uh, second.
What's that?
Okay, um clerk had tried to obtain official signature but did not receive a response. Does this set a new way without signing?
Well, if the person refuses to come in and give a signature, then.
Yeah, she has to certify.
Email is official.
She has to certify and has so much time to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And she did that. That's the one thing that I was having a trouble with because he wouldn't. He sent an email in, which is an official, but wouldn't, didn't put a electronic signature on it. So from what I could read from Mass General Law, it's her authority that she can certify that.
Yeah.
And then she, again, I'm not gonna get into it, but then ten, within ten days, she has to notify the board members associated with that. It's like 104, but I don't care about that.
But it has to be a certain length of time.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure she researched that.
Yeah, all right. Well, I just, you know, I've heard other people discuss about it. Uh, second, development rate limitation by law. One, two, three, fourth line down. He obtained, uh, be obtained for residential dwelling, and I think between four and residential should be senior or over fifty-five. It's not, because standard residential is not allowed at the heights.
Correct. Yeah, I agree with you on that one, Dick.
But was that actually stated? Was that the way it was stated at the, at the meeting? Because the minutes, uh, can't go back and just add in statements that weren't, that weren't stated at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Then therefore they're, you know.
But, oh, so what do we say? That that, put in parentheses, incorrect statement because ninety-five E doesn't say that? That the section ninety-five E of the bylaw doesn't say residential.
Just because this was stated this way in the minutes doesn't mean that it's a violation of our bylaw. That's just the way it was stated at the meeting. So it doesn't, this doesn't really mean anything in terms of.
Well, to me, it doesn't when I read it, and it's not right.
Well, if that's the way it was said at the meeting.
It's still not right.
But you can't go back and change what, and basically add something that doesn't state it.
How do you fix it? How do you fix it? So that people, other people can read this and say, hey, they're saying that residential.
During the meeting, if you hear someone make an incorrect statement at the time during the meeting, you correct them. And that way it ends up in the minutes correctly.
Uh, okay.
Well, then I want you to go back through the, the thing and you tell me if this is the way it was.
Yeah, because I can't, yeah, because I can't believe, because Mike and I talked about this multiple times, and he knew that he couldn't do residential, but senior and fifty-five was allowed, and that's what he was pushing for. Because it was, it was odd. At the beginning of the bylaw, we say it's okay, and then down here in the exceptions, we say, no, you can't do it.
Yeah, we can go back and check the minutes to make, make sure that's what, the way it was stated.
Because the, the, I guess I'll ask the question then, the revised bylaw is, is just exing that exception, correct?
Ex, yeah, the, that, the, it's basically taken out the fact that the over, the, 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 it will allow these over fifty-five to be exempt.
Yes.
From the bylaw, because you're right, um, in the, in that zoning district, um, overall residential is not allowed.
Yeah.
The only residential that's allowed is the senior over fifty-five housing.
And it, we, we stated it up top, and then down in the exception, it became a paradox, and I'm like.
I just don't want to set a precedent that we're going back and editorializing and making changes to the minutes over things that were not stated because that's, you legally can't do that. So I'll go back and check that to make sure that's, that's the way it's stated.
But in today's minutes, as we're discussing this, it can go into minutes that there was an error in there and we're reviewing it, correct?
Well, no, you won't, you just won't pass the minutes.
Okay.
We can table, we can table these minutes to the next meeting.
Okay.
So that's, that's all we do. You don't have to make a statement on it. Just we'll pull it back and we'll, we'll verify that.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure, because I know Mike had talked to me and I said, I just wanna, I get where you're being, and unfortunately, uh, the cough from hell, um, kept me under the weather for three weeks. So, all right. And then the other thing I had, it's before yours, Dick. Am I correct? And I didn't know this, so this young lad doesn't have to run this May. He stays on for two years? Or are they forcing him to run this May?
I think, I think he has to run again in May.
Because this thing, am I, I'm not reading this right. It says, at the time, the seat will be put on the ballot, oh, for the remainder of the two years.
Correct.
Okay, that's why I didn't, I read it wrong. That's my fault.
When he runs in the spring, it'll be for the remainder of the term, not a fresh new term.
Okay, excellent. Perfect, thank you. That's why I wasn't reading that wrong. All right, that's it for me.
Master plan. You know that the focus should be on revision implemented by golden objective section. He also advised that there's a process to follow, and it would be, would not be appropriate for individual board members to have a one-on-one discussion with staff at Central Mass Regional Planning. Norm, you brought this thing up in November with Tamer, you know, having the stuff online for us to review in three weeks. And we have not discussed it as a board.
I think we should plan for that in January, because I've still got a couple, I've at least got two weeks of going through it.
Here was the recommendation of the planning consultant, the interim planner, was that the, the, the thing that should be focused on by the planning board are basically the goals and objectives. In terms of the rest of the document, like I said, most of the comments that I'm pulling out are editorial things that can be taken care of with CMRPC staff. I think the discussion of the planning board, per Richard, Richard's suggestion, should focus on the implementation, the goals and objectives. I think that should be discussed at, with the board as a whole, not to revisit the whole two-hundred-and-forty-page document. I don't think that's, I don't think that's appropriate or worth the time at all.
Then what you're doing and saying, you're accepting another organization's their thoughts, not ours.
No, this went through a public process. It went through public forums. It went through a public comment period. And from what I understand, you, you were on, you were on the master plan committee.
Steering committee.
It's gone through a process. This is at the end of the process. We're at the one-yard line, and so.
I, I, I think, and again, this is my opinion, is that that last twenty pages, I think it is, twenty, twenty-five pages, need to be thoroughly gone through. And like I said, there's gotta be an implementation. I don't know how we do that. I don't have a plan for that yet.
Well, no, yeah, so that, you mean those last pages with the, with the spreadsheet?
Yeah, exactly. And then if we have to interject a section that has a, what's the word I'm looking for? A, um, a charge for how the implementation needs to be done, that has to be laid out.
Yes.
And then I've looked over some of, um, of Dick's comments, and there's somebody didn't proof it as well as they should. There's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of, uh, foo bars in there, and, uh, that needs to be cleaned up. And CMRP should be doing that on their nickel, not on ours, unless we.
And that's the type of thing where I could, you know.
Yeah.
Your comments, Mike, Dick's comments, we could, we could talk to CMRP and say, listen, here's some things you need to clean up in this document. But to discuss those things as a whole, as a board, I think would not be productive to go through the entire document over again.
But I think we need to in-depth.
Pardon?
We'd be spending another year.
I, I think we need to spend a decent amount of time, Norm, on that last section as a board. And if that's a whole meeting, it's a whole, if it's two whole meetings, three, I don't care.
Right.
We gotta get through that section and make sure that we're good, because once this thing's done, she's going in the file box and the implementation, whoever's gonna use it.
Exactly, right. You hope.
Well, I think, I think we got a better shot now of doing than we did in two thousand.
And like I said, definitely clean up the foo bars, but I don't want to get caught up in the weeds because again, the meat and potatoes is that implementation, like I said. That is really what we need to focus on is how, how are we, how are we going to get where we need to be with these goals and objectives?
And I think, Dick, when I was looking through your comments and the last section, if we get that last section cleaned up, it actually goes back and sort of, I don't want to use the word trumps, shouldn't say that, overrides, that's a better word. I don't want to use trump. Not overrides, but cleans up sections that maybe weren't as, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, clear? And I think that's gonna help out that last section where they sort of do the executive summary. And we can talk about that and get that taken care of. That's my opinion.
Because at the end of the day, that's what I'm gonna be focusing on as part of my job, is the goals and objectives for economic development and land use. That's what I'm gonna be focusing on, whether or not there's, you know, a misstatement on page eighty-seven? You know, or a foo bar on page eighty-seven?
Yeah.
The goals and objectives of what we're looking at for, for, for going forward, that's, that's.
As long as that section is the section that the town uses and is part of the implementation, I'm kind, because, Dick, I'm gonna be honest, when I've gone through this, there's a, to be who's written scope documents for jobs, this is like my, my seventy percent fluff for the contractor that I make them read it. And then the last part, we're actually telling what they're gonna do.
The actual job.
Yeah, it is. And that's what that is, John. That's, that last section is my.
I don't, I don't want to get spent too much time on this right now, because we're, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I just, in, in all honesty, I just hope it does get straightened out.
So, yeah.
And, um, because needless to say, uh, you have an individual that says it's, she wants it, wants it to go through because she says that our group is not properly doing what they, what she feels that they should be doing. She wants to know.
That's great.
So anyway, so yes, well, you know, Tim and I spoke today about going through the comments on page one-hundred-twenty-nine.
Yeah, I, I've got at least two more weeks, Dick, to get through everything that I've seen, so. And I think by beginning of January, I'll be in good shape to sit in this front of this board, at least my comments. I don't know everybody else, but my comments. Again, I was on the committee, so I, I'm gonna say this to everybody on the board. There's pieces of that master plan I don't agree with, but the master plan group voted, and I will back what that plan did, what that group did. So my opinions, they're my opinions, but what the group did is that's what I'm gonna support, so that's just the way it is. Okay, good enough.
So we'll, we'll table the meet, the minutes from November 28th. I'll go back and I'll, I'll just verify what, the way that was stated.
Anyway, are there any other comments on the?
Um, for the master plan, um, you know, when I had to read it, it's just like, is there information that's great, relevant? I mean, to me, I have to kind of almost take that face value that there is some truth to everything in there, so. I understand your historical reference needing some adjustment if there's like something wildly out of, out of.
The acreage and Colin for parks, how many times? It's parks, plural. All we have is one park in this town, period.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, so.
And, and, and there was proposed some stuff that, uh, that we picked out, because I know it was totally inaccurate. There, there was a, an employment table. Where the hell they got it from, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it said the Boy Scouts were employing something like twelve-hundred people in Rutland.
Yeah, I remember that. That included solar panels?
Yeah, so Tim, your comments, in combination with Dick's comments, Dick's comments are gonna be important, because I wasn't involved in the drafting of this.
Yeah.
And I just, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure this is moving forward, because we do need to get this approved. Because again, having an active master plan or not having active master plan will disqualify us from certain grant opportunities. So I want to make sure this gets done in a way where, again, we're correcting the things that should be corrected, but not getting too caught up in, in the minutia of things. Uh, and focusing on, on what the real, the real meat and potatoes is of, of the, of the plan, which is the goals and objectives.
Yeah. All right, so that's tabled. Are we gonna make, do we gotta?
Just so we, are there any other comments on the minutes, even though we're not gonna approve them?
So, yes, next, act of subdivisions. Or is that, is that part of the?
That's the agenda stuff, I think.
Right. Is that, that's not the minutes though, is it?
No, that was in my meeting memo.
Meeting memo, okay.
It is under other at the bottom. What happened to the minutes? Yeah. Yeah, we didn't talk about it.
Okay, so we're tabling the minutes.
Yep. I'll rescind it, I do. And I'll rescind. Oh, I didn't do, that's right. I did the other one. I did. I can't do this one, because I could abstain from this one. I wasn't here, dummy.
I guess we do need to vote to table?
No.
No, no.
No.
No. Okay, um, next thing on the agenda is accepting the resignation of Tim Gibson from the Planning Board Bylaw Subcommittee. Uh, I was going to call and talk with him. I did not have a chance to.
I got, unfortunately today, I got tied up with my boss.
I had sent him an email, asked him to reconsider, but he was vehemently not going to reconsider, so.
I, I read the letter last night, and I just, this, I'll say to the board, I can't disagree with him.
Neither can I.
I know what's going on.
And I do, I understand enforcement is a huge issue in every community. Uh, unfortunately, staff can't be everywhere, um, so it's, it's, it's a challenge for every community to enforce their regulations and, and be on the ground and, and see what everyone's doing. And to add to that, Norm and I spoke about this today, my position, your position on the board is, and this entire board, none of us have enforcement capability. Basically, that lies with the Building Commissioner and the Conservation Commission. Those are the two departments I work with who can actually go out and stop an activity, but I can't do that. So, yeah, I, I share his frustration. There have been times in past positions where, you know, um, I, you know, I wish enforcement had been better on certain things. But again, it's, staff is, staff is very busy and it's tough to be everywhere, so we rely on people noticing things and, um, you know.
Well, John, you don't know this, this is through Norm. The, the problem I had is we did have a complaint come in. And, and this is my opinion, the way it was handled was the complating was basically, in my opinion, crucified. Which, which is gonna deter anybody from down the road of doing that.
Absolutely.
And, and that really frustrated me to no end. Secondly, his point, I brought up when Addison was on this, and we both talked about, or the board had talked about, and I know you two guys weren't here, Johnny weren't here, but there's just hundreds, so. I was gonna, my, my position as chairman, I was gonna talk to Tim and say, listen, I think I'd like you to stay on until we can get through Glen Copulus, because I think that'll be a huge help to the town by getting a facility. In fact, it just came up by talking.
What's Glen Copulus?
That's the, we were looking for the rezoning to a.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Industrial park. So we would have the ability to put people that, that have businesses in, in one place, and they wouldn't have to be.
In the residential neighborhoods.
In the residential neighborhoods. And then something had come up too, which I want to talk to him about, is I got thrown on the table yesterday about, um, a large parcel of acreage in the village, or outside the village district with Dave Putnan, that he'd be interested in doing something like that too. So we could have two sections in town that could accommodate what Tim's frustrated about.
And that's perfect. And, and they're called basically, uh, commercial condos. Where I've seen them in towns like when I was in Rentham and Rainham, they would do those where they'd have these condo units, and they'd have a small maze, basically reception or, or desk office area with, you know, the logo on the door where people could come in, you may have a secretary there. But then on the backside was an overhead door where they could do a little bit of storage, say it's for people like plumbers, landscapers, general contractors who have outgrown their home business.
Yes.
They have a place to go, but they don't need to, they, they don't necessarily need a full building of their own.
Yeah, and we'd even talked about just having a, a forebay with a desk in it.
Yeah, yeah.
That you could drive an excavator into or a front loader.
So, Tim, what you're saying is, do you want to hold off on, on accepting the resignation?
That's what I was gonna ask the board. Can, can we, can we give, I mean, how, when, again, I apologize, I didn't get to talk to him today. What, do you think, John, based on your conversation, there's any hope, or is he just?
Well.
Because he was, the last meeting, he was really good.
He doesn't know he me from a hole in the wall. So I was just introducing myself, so if you want to talk to him.
I do.
Yeah.
All right, let me, let me do that. I would.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you, Tim.
No, that's okay.
Um, I was just gonna say, we'll have to just double-check the Nida, because now that his resignation has been certified, I don't know what the implications have.
Maybe he can't take it back. Maybe he has to be reappointed. But I think it's worth, so, does the board have to accept this resignation, and then Tim could talk to him and potentially have him reappointed?
Yeah, more troubles within the ten days. The eighth was the end of the ten days.
Okay, so I think the, I think what, what was, what we're finding out here is the board pretty much has to accept the resignation at this point, but hold off on, on putting word out, seeking applicants until Tim talks to him.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I wouldn't, I don't mind putting out more applicants to make, we needed as many as I could get. We've only got board members, so.
So why don't, why don't we do that then, if the board wants, if, if, if the board wants to?
Do we have to have?
I guess what I'll do.
Resident come in anytime and sit down and be part of it? Or does he have to be sworn in?
It's all, it's all a meeting.
Yeah. I guess part of this resignation is, I probably should let the board know, is that I don't think I went outside the law, but I asked Bonnie Bessie, who's been an integral member of the bylaw subcommittee, to be at the committee meeting. She can't vote, but as a, as a, as a person in the background, she can give comments.
Yeah, but anyway, so I would say for the sake of this resignation, I would, I would ask the board to make a motion to accept the resignation. And then if Tim wants to speak to, um.
I'm going to, yeah.
Other gentleman, um.
Tim Gibson.
Tim Gibson. Tim wants to talk to Tim and ask him to reconsider and be reappointed, then he could be reappointed.
Okay.
Or just come to the meetings, uh, because he had good knowledge and.
He did, he was, he was good.
Yeah, so if he won't, yeah, if he won't reconsider, um, then he can still attend the meetings.
If he wants to do what Bonnie's doing, I'm fine with that, because any knowledge.
Follow up with him as soon as you can, so.
I'll try tomorrow.
So we can get word out asking for.
I still think, I, John, I still think what I said to Mika, and he might not heard, I still think we need to put another advertisement out, because literally, we only had one person other than Tim on that board that was outside of the, outside the planning board. So two or three more members would be great to have.
Well, I, from what I understand, there is someone who has expressed interest in joining that committee, so if you want to talk to Tim, I would do it pretty soon.
Yeah, because I don't think we had a numbered limit on that committee, if I remember right.
So I might recommend, I can put something out after the first of the year, get through the holidays.
Yeah, because we're not gonna have any meetings. I guess I'd advise the board to, I talked to Norm and, and John, and the holiday season's just too crazy, so the first week of January, I'm gonna book a room with the, uh, uh, library. We're gonna try to, I mean, I always try to use the Cawkins room, because that's sort of a nice, nice table in there, so you can spread out, anyhow, so.
Yeah, so why don't we do that, and then you can talk to Tim and see.
I guess I'll make a motion to accept, um, Tim Gibson's resignation from the bylaw subcommittee.
Second with regrets.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? Hope we can reverse it. Anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Uh, planning board agendas, John.
Yeah, so this is something, this is something that's been common practice wherever I've been, and it's, it's been something that I've had to enforce quite a bit. I mean, when I used to be, um, in my office, eating dinner, waiting for a planning board meeting in Stoughton to start, um, it would happen all the time that an attorney for an applicant would, uh, email me a memo forty-five minutes, an hour before a planning board meeting, say, hey, here's a memo for the planning board for tonight. Not gonna fly. Um, so I would like to put, I would like to have the board allow me or vote to allow me to actually put a policy in place where any document or materials that somebody wants for consideration for the, at an upcoming planning board meeting has to be provided to me at least one week in advance of that meeting, in fairness to you gentlemen. Because, um, obviously to give you the weekend to review it if you need to. And also, Tim had a good suggestion about, um, you know, email, not only paper copy, but electronically as well. Because like you said, papers can find a way of.
Yeah, I just, I like the fact that we can file stuff electronically, and so we ever got to find it. Hope, we got a server that backs everything up, so I think we do. Never asked that question.
So again, this is not some.
Everything got lost.
This is not something that's unique. This is something that boards that I've worked with have had to implement because of that very issue. Happens all the time where, um, applicants will try and, um, drop something on the planning board's lap at the last minute. It's just, it's just not, it's just not fair to you gentlemen. It's not fair to any abutters who may be there and other residents, and it's not fair to staff. The only per, the only entity that really benefits is the applicant, because then I don't like the idea of someone trying to slip something through that hasn't been thoroughly reviewed, because it may have to be reviewed by town council, depending on what the document is as well, so.
And that was the one, oh, go ahead, Norm. One, one particular thing that just kind of, kind of comes to my mind, that I think needs to be made clear, for example, our consulting engineer, it is not at all uncommon for us to get a subdivision report the day before a meeting or even the day of the meeting.
That, and he's no, that's no different than an applicant. Yep, so he would be held.
No, he is, uh, he is loud to do it.
Yeah. Oh, you, you want to allow him to do that?
Betcha.
Yeah. Okay.
You betcha.
That's fine.
Typically, oh, yeah, typically when I've, because that happens all the time, you get a third-party engineer report, literally the night before a meeting. And usually the town planner will say, hey, do you want to review this and continue, or do you want to go in there with this information? And usually, we would always continue, because you have to review that and statement and.
Well, because what happens, well, here's the other thing, is in that case, that may not be fair to the applicant, because the applicant's engineer needs to review that and potentially respond to those comments. So that's why I say if we need to be consistent with this, because if Kevin Quinn has a report on Monday afternoon or Tuesday during the day, then the applicant, and the applicant's engineer isn't prepared to respond to those comments. So that usually needs to be distributed to the applicant, so I would say that puts the applicant in, in dis, because the idea is to keep the things progressing. So if we get a report from, from Kevin Quinn on a Tuesday, the applicant hasn't had a chance to review that, so I'm trying to establish some consistency here, both sides.
Doesn't he send it to Klee?
Oh, yeah.
It's a Klee?
Yeah, but I'm sort of, I, I'm back to my fairness.
Engineers can't respond when in the day, and if they need to respond to comments, they need to get that to the board, so it's kind of a vicious cycle.
I, I'm sort of, Norm, this, in, in one aspect, I know that with these subdivisions, e- even if we got it, we didn't have all the comments blessed that, that, that day meeting, but I think we need, I think I like John's comment. But I think we need, I think I like John's comment of if we have, there's no reason why we can't get the report and, and talk about it as a less than forty-eight hours. But to act on it, I think that it needs the week. That, that's my opinion.
Because that's the, cause honestly, I've heard from.
If there's any action that has to be taken, I can see.
I've, I've heard.
But so, so many of these reports, it's read it and, yeah, yeah, that's what he's done and that's.
But the way that's usually handled is the, we could take it under consideration.
Yeah.
But again, um, I, you know, I've, I've had engineers who have told me, John, I don't have, I don't have time to respond before tomorrow night's meeting to this, because I ju, I'm just getting this day. Because applicants' engineers also have other projects they're working on and they're busy. So again, in fairness to all parties involved.
Two weeks, we got a two-week wait over for Carol out or whatever.
Well, it would be, it would be one meeting, basically, which is two weeks. I.
Could be three.
Yeah, I just, I think we've gotta do this, cause I, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, Dave tried to do this about two years ago and he was pretty good at it. And then unfortunately, this is my opinion, he just got piled on and he just couldn't, you know, he had so much other work that's done. He couldn't enforce the policy, he didn't get around to writing one. And I'm not blaming him for that, I think we need to do it. The only, I was gonna add, and I thought you were gonna take away from me, Norm, is that there's someplace we've gotta talk about, and and maybe this is another policy, is we've got the, the, one week before, I'm good with for comments. But anything that relates to a town meeting action, and the first thing comes to mind is roads, road acceptance. It, it can't be a week, we've gotta come up with months of time and some.
We already talked.
Oh, you guys did, okay, I'll shut up then, yeah.
But like I said, I'm trying to establish something that's consistent for everybody. And it's, I gotta tell you, just speaking, doing this for twenty-four years, it's not efficient to have things dropped at the last minute, because again, that's not fair to anybody. It's not fair to abutters who show up to the man like, whoa, wait a second.
Yeah, I've seen that, and then I've also been on the other side, I've seen those boards have a meeting law violations.
And that's the other thing.
And the board really opens themselves up to.
Escape hatch or something like that.
Specific issues with that. Especially if there's a vote made that night.
Yes.
That's where you can really get in trouble.
Yes, again, I'm trying to avoid, Britton just brought up a good point, is potential open meeting law violations. If you're taking something in at the last minute that hasn't been pro, hasn't been properly vetted and then action is taken, and a butter could, a butter could appeal that and say, hey, the board didn't have ample time to, it was dropped on in the last minute and they're making a decision.
I make a motion then to drop open meeting laws.
The only thing I.
That one might get a little pushback.
It may not, too.
The only thing is, I like what Dick said, Norm, is that somewhere we gotta put, I mean, there, a- as we've seen with the select board, there's emergencies that come up that have to be handled. I, I, I don't know if that would be an exception to the rule, maybe.
What type of emergencies are you talking about?
We're talking about engineer, or something happened, goes wrong in the highway department, you know.
I couldn't predict, but I know, I mean, I didn't expect we'd have an emergency meeting to get a liquor license through. I mean, that, to me, is freaking crazy, but it happened. So I just wanna make sure we've got, and maybe there's something there we put in for exceptions based upon need, or I don't know. I, I'm just throwing words out.
Because here's the thing, because if you're coming to, for instance, the only thing I could think of with this board is, say, you're coming to the end of the period that the board needs to act on an application. You can grant a continuance. The applicant can grant a continuance. The applicant can grant a continuance for the twenty-one days for an A and R.
Yeah.
An applicant can be granted a continuance beyond the ninety days or whatever the case may be to issue a decision on a project. If there's a reason that something needs to be either vetted by the board, or again, it, it could have to go to town council. But taking something within the, especially with the meetings on a Tuesday. We're talking about some, the town halls closed on Fridays.
Yeah.
So a week is not an imposition, is a, is not a big imposition. And once you get this established, believe me, been in towns where basically no engineers, developers do. In fact, engineers, I think, will appreciate this, because again, they don't appreciate having peer review comments dropped on them at the last minute either.
And, and Dick, maybe this is just a time to s, to draw the line in the sand, like we did with the um, when Norm put that letter together that went in that no more of the uh, so what I'm looking for, for the lots, the uh.
Oh, invasive, not invasive.
Elusive frontage. We put that out there and, and we gave a timeframe that as of this date, it's not gonna happen. So I think that policy is an excellent time to bring it in.
With, with roadway acceptances, the, the, the role that the, the planning board plays in that process is actually a very small role. Basically, the, the applicant has to get any um, the roadway as-built plans, the roadway acceptance plans, and also any meets and bounds descriptions. They have to get that through our town council before they ever come to the planning board. So all that legwork is done before.
It hasn't happened, I mean, we, 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 we've got the as-built.
It's supposed to. It does, okay, it does, okay.
No, it doesn't. It went to Kevin Quinn and we had ninety-nine um issues with one of Klee's properties. So if our attorneys missed that, they need fired. Cause.
So, so basically, I think, I think it's, it's basically similar to um when the select board refers articles to the planning board for a public hearing for town meeting. It's basically that the select board plays a small role in that. I think it's similar with road acceptances where the planning board doesn't actually vote to accept the road. It goes, we make a recommendation to the select board that this is ready to be laid out.
We have to have the site walk and everything else.
We have to do the site walk together with the engineers, with the DPW and.
I think Nate's way was actually a great example of it being done the right way. Um, because it started with the planning board, you guys did the initial site visit, as did Kevin Quinn back in April. He provided some feedback, George worked on those things over the summer.
Yes.
Once he submitted his actual uh request for street acceptance, I first sent it to town council before I even moved forward with scheduling the public hearings with the select board to drop the wave.
That's correct, yes.
Of intention, then at that point, they refer to the planning board for their recommendation. But I don't present it to anybody until um Shirin usually has reviewed the entire.
So that's, that's a situation where that has, the wheels on that have to start turning months in advance of a town meeting, so.
And to, to Mika's point, my, wh- what she described is exactly what happened. Where I'm having the trouble is, is that, call it the preliminary portion, when it went to, you know, we did the site walk and then Kevin or um uh had come up with a report and there were all of these issues. And, well, we get it done before the town meeting and we're like, hold it. You're trying to jam this in at the last second.
Exactly it.
And that's why I wanna stop.
And I'm sorry, but there may be instances where it's just not ready for that town meeting, because there are too many issues. Again, that, I, I can't think, I, they're gonna be very rarely instances of emergencies. If they don't make the deadline, they don't make the deadline.
I'm good with that.
You know, again, um, this does, it's not a blanket case, but the sa, old saying goes, you know, poor planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on mine. It's, it's up to them to, to have their ducks in a row. And I've had to have discussions with engineers about, um, hey, you know, I just don't think this is, this is, I think we're gonna have to continue this public hearing on this subdivision, because it's, we're just, you know, the, the peer review engineer hasn't had a chance to review this. Or sometimes the engineer will call and say, listen, we have to continue, cause we just haven't had, we don't have time to respond to the peer review engineer's comments before the meeting.
And, and Norm, I think, I, I think I like what John's doing. If we get a policy in place, there can always be an exception that you, uh, the chairman and John can look at and then bring before the board if it needs to. But that's an exception to the policy, it's not the policy, you're following a policy all the time.
Yeah, right.
That's, I mean, there's, there can be anything that can come up. We can't, you can't write a policy on, on exceptions, you just, you gotta take them as they come in.
But right now, there, there's, there's, there's no regulation, it's kinda like the Wild West. And the planning board has no.
Something to start with.
You gotta have.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think we should, I think we should at least get it out there and, and start conditioning our engineers, our builders and uh any consultants, that this is what our expectation is. Cause like I said, we tried to do this a couple of years ago and by putting it on meeting minutes and bringing it out, it just.
And I need that time too, because if I, we're getting to the end of a public hearing and there are comments from our engineering peer review or from their engineer that's gonna end up as a condition of approval, I need to make sure those are in the decision before it gets approved. So I need that time too, it's not just for everybody else, it's also for staff too. Like I said, I need that time to make sure that the decision is complete and everything that should be in the decision is in the decision.
Guess I'll make a motion for.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You know, I, I'll go along with it, uh, you know, I think it is good to have a policy like this. Certainly, let's see how it works. If it needs modification in the future, it could be modified. Uh, the other thing is, before even the policy is adopted. Okay, I'd like to see it written and all of our principal clients.
Yes.
Are informed.
Yep.
And that would include the builders, our own engineers.
Yeah.
Uh, and for that matter, even legal maybe.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a very simple policy, it's gonna be one sentence, pretty much, so. Um, it's not meant to be rocket science, it's just, because like I said, Norm, when you think about it, your meetings are on Tuesday. Town hall's closed on Friday. So when, it's not really seven days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday are out of the, out of the, out of it automatically. So really, it's, so really, if they need to get it on Tuesday, it's Wednesday, Thursday, Monday. So you're really talking three days, three full days. That's not a lot, that's a half a week. So by saying seven days before the meeting, you're really talking about three business days.
Yep. That's why, Norm, I was gonna make a motion, I was gonna add a bunch of uh addendums to it.
So that's why I don't think, I don't think it's a big imposition at all.
Yeah, I guess I was gonna make a motion to allow the planner to write a um, a policy that allows. Or requires a one-week timeframe for submission of documentation for the planning board with review of the planning board and, and stakeholders, I'll use.
Well, I don't want, I don't wanna ask them for permission, I want the board to be okay with it. They need to be informed, but I'm not asking for their blessing.
Yeah, just for them to be informed.
Okay, let me rephrase it, then.
We're not gonna ask for their opinion on it.
Okay.
Exactly.
Then let me rephrase that, um, review by the planning board and inf, and uh a local information to um.
I'll get the word out, I'll get the word out.
Yep, that's it.
Yep.
Second said motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this one?
Um, I guess real quick, I guess based on MGL, if like you said, someone throws something on your desk, you can't do anything but put it on the next agenda, there's no natural.
Well, MGL is different, when you talk about putting on an agenda, we need to post the agenda at least forty-eight hours, business hours before. So the agenda for Tuesday needs to be posted by the end of the day on Thursday, because we're closed on Friday. In towns where they have limited hours on Friday, they could post on Friday morning for a Tuesday meeting. Um, so.
Isn't it need to work on Friday?
If somebody wants an agenda item, they have to get it to us.
I think she does.
At least on that Thursday, to be included on an agenda.
And it's just.
Yeah.
So they can get in and review any drawings, not enough time to even.
Right.
Because they're being around on Friday.
I have no idea.
Let me start, yeah, okay.
Okay, anything further?
Excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
No.
No.
When you get to four.
This is something I know that when I first started, I know, uh, when Tamika and I first started talking, she said this was, this was brought up potentially before my time as a possibility of moving up the meetings to six P M. So um, this is up to the board. Um, you know, if, if it doesn't work uh for any members of the board, if it makes it, if it's too much of an imposition to get here for six o'clock, then that's fine, um, but figured we'd discuss it and if the answer is no, then the answer is no.
Especially with winter coming on.
Six thirty gives me prep time, that's the reason why I always like it, cause if I get home, I've got half an hour. Like tonight, I was trying, half an hour to finish up, but I needed to get to John and Norm.
Okay.
So I, I, I like six thirty, I know sometimes it forces our meeting laters, I get it, but.
I know Britton, obviously, having been working on the Cape recently, that.
Yeah.
Six o'clock would be a, a, an impossibility most of the time.
I'm done with the Cape now, so that's, thank you. Yeah, but if you're on four ninety-five, that could be.
Most of my business is on that side and it takes forever to get home.
Okay.
Yeah, I think six thirty's a good one.
Okay, so we'll keep it at six thirty, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, number five, upcoming meeting scheduled for December and January.
So.
We all wanna meet the day after Christmas.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We got a lot to do though, there, I mean, there's things on the books, there's.
Select board's given the town administrator the authority to uh, uh, sign warrant, or I think that's right, sign, cause they're not meeting on the, on Tuesday, so I don't think we should either.
Okay, so.
It's my opinion.
I was surprised, so no.
The following day for, I think we should uh jump right into a subcommittee or.
Did I show you my new flogging tool?
It's out back, let me show you real quick.
It's a double lot piece of copper. And, and because it's got uh plastic on it, it won't show any marks.
So, so our meeting, so just to confirm, our meeting schedule in January is the ninth and the twenty-third? And thirteenth and the twenty-seventh in February.
And.
Thirteenth?
Yeah, that's the.
It's late, isn't it?
That's the, yeah, that's the second Tuesday in February.
And just for everybody else on the board.
Is that February break?
No, I think February break, it actually, I think February breaks between the two, usually it's the third week in February, yeah.
Whatever week is President's Day.
Yeah.
Got it.
So lucky for you, it falls in between two meeting weeks, right?
There you go.
I was just, try to think ahead.
And then I was looking to have the bylaw subcommittees um have a meeting on the seventeenth. I was thinking that first full week, but that's gonna be us on the fir, on the ninth, so.
Yes.
I'll do it the following, when, is, is, can everybody on the board Wednesday, is that a good time?
Wednesday, whoa.
The seventeenth. Cause right now, we're the only ones on the.
That's for the bylaw subcommittee, correct?
Subcommittee, yeah.
So who on the board is on that subcommittee?
Everybody, everybody, okay, got you.
Um, may I just make a note that um for the January ninth meeting, we should put an agenda item for the planning board to officially appoint Britton to the bylaw subcommittee.
Oh.
It's not an automatic.
Okay.
No, I thought it was automatic with planning board members. Have to look at the.
I don't think, I don't think we've been that formal.
Okay.
It, we probably should.
It wouldn't hurt, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt.
I thought, I remember by default, your planning board members were on the bylaw subcommittee.
When did you say your?
Seventeenth.
I do not know.
I'm sorry. Are you in Florida?
No, in January and February, uh, always a third Tuesday is ad committee, meeting.
This was gonna be on a Wednesday.
So you're talking February.
Yep, no, January seventeenth is what I was looking at, which is a Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And again, I'm, six thirty is what I was gonna shoot for, because again, it was everybody time to get there. And lately, the meetings haven't been going that long, because really the focus is uh, I gotta get Glenn, that's a guy, I gotta, gotta get there.
Seventeen, January seventeenth.
Yeah, I think, I kinda kept a policy on those meetings, two hours.
Okay.
Maximum.
I don't believe I'll be there at the seventeenth, because I have a uh, highly uh classified one for substantial master original planning meeting that night.
Oh, he could tell us, but he'd have to kill us.
Yeah. Well, again, I'll just plan on that and see how it evolves.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Cause I wanna, I wanna work with the library to get dates for like the next two or three months, so we can get locked in. Because what happened is, we had a meeting here, the first one we had.
Yep.
In walked the Economic Development Committee and said, hey, you're in our room. I go, uh, no, I booked this with the lady upstairs.
That's where you got the flogging?
Yeah, I got the, why, why are you in our room? I'm like, I booked this. And they went upstairs and found out, yeah, he did book it, so they just assumed that they always had the room.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't do assumptions.
Weekdays or something, yeah.
Yeah, so I said, I apologize, but I need to have this meeting, so. All right, I'll do the, the seventeenth and then uh we'll try the thirty-first too of, of January. I'll try to get at least those two booked for six thirty on Wednesdays, cause I, Wednesday seemed to be a good day to try to get everybody together. Okay, good enough. Well, I know it's the middle of winter and we could have twenty-two inches of snow, but. We'll see.
Yeah.
Alright, that's it for the bylaw subcommittee.
Okay.
So I think number six, we actually kind of talked about already, so we know where everyone stands and uh. I said, Tim and I are gonna finish compiling the comments and we'll put this as an agenda item in January, the ninth or the twenty-third to. It, it sounds like if it has to wait till twenty-third, we've got enough, enough work to do on this where one meeting is not gonna make or break this thing, so. I would rather put it out for the twenty-third when the agenda's probably gonna be lighter, if that's okay with everybody. So.
December twenty-third?
Uh, January twenty-third. So yeah. So that's prob- that's what I'm looking at right now is to give Tim a chance to get through his comments and me to get through the comments and then. Um, have a good discussion on it where we don't have four public hearings, even though they're not gonna be long. Um, I'd rather have a, a, a lighter agenda to discuss that and that can.
I'll dig back into. It is, and I guess I'll ask Peter afterwards. I've seen comments that they might not be ready for this February meeting. Is there any chance it's gonna get canceled?
I think the chance is very, very slim.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the, uh, the select board did a marathon, it was eight hour meeting this past Saturday.
Nine hours.
Basically finished the entire bylaw review so that um Peter cannot send everything to town council.
They're not messed around. Yeah, that's incredible.
So as of right now, that's still planned.
And alright, again, I just read some uh, our meeting minutes. I was like, oh no.
Yeah.
Cause I wanna get, I wanna get John's four things through in February, so we don't have to have this at the town meeting.
That's, you know, and, and that's the thing, yeah, and, and that's why, I, I mean, Leah stopped at the town hall today and. I said, listen Leah, I said, I appreciate you getting on it for this town meeting because really, you know, there's, there's two things that should have been. There are two things that should have been at the last, you know, at the last thing and uh, you know, uh, one of these is new. Um, so, I mean, uh, you know, so.
And we submitted those for the.
Yep, they refer, yep.
Yeah.
Uh, public hearing on the ninth, so I said, you know, plus it, it'll have less things we'll have to put on for May. Because there are a few things in the works for May that I'm working on, so we have the corrections when the town clerk was um incorporating the most recent um. Uh, zoning bylaw amendments. There were some typos that need to be cleaned up a few. And also I'm gonna be working on a, a used table and a dimensional table for the zoning bylaws. So those are a few things I'll be working on for May. And I know um Dave has been working on tweaks to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that will be on an agenda in January to talk about.
Interesting. Okay, uh revolving fund expenditure request.
Yes.
It's gonna get me wound up.
So. Um. How's this gonna get you wound up?
Cause our, our. Our revolving fund is not the town's kitty free money fund.
Yeah.
They need to put stuff on general fund budget and pay for it out of the general fund. Our kitty budget is not something that, cause I, again, this is my opinion. I feel it, uh, just because we've got money there, that's gonna be the alternate plan to go to is putting, as opposed to putting it in a budget. Again, my opinion.
So, that being the case, um, myself and Bree in our building. In the annex, we're basically the only two people who still have metal desks. I think, I don't know where mine came from. I don't know how old it. What's that?
The year nineteen twenty-nine is where it came from.
Seriously?
No, I'm kidding, what it could have.
I was gonna say, I don't know where it came from.
From the library desk.
I don't know if it's the library or from the hospital, whatever, but it's very worn. It's, it's not very practical in terms of that, um. So what I was looking at doing was um ordering a new desk for myself, nothing extravagant, just an L-shaped desk with. A couple drawers and a couple drawer uh for supplies, a couple drawers where I could have hanging folders where I can put files that. I don't want, that are maybe personnel files, H R files for myself.
You're lucky.
Um, and I can have more surface space, cause my desk with the two monitors and the keyboard and everything, I basically have no room to, and I have no room to do anything. So what it'll also allow me to do is I will put that L-shaped desk in the corner facing the window. And it'll open space up along the wall and I will take one of the two tables that sticks out from the wall right now, put it against the wall with the printer. And take the other table and put it out in the middle of the room as a small meeting room. Where I can roll out large plans, meet with a couple people at a time, so it'll allow, it'll allow me to maximize the space in that office to the max. Um, so I'm requesting uh an expenditure not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. It'll basically probably be, be, be between twelve and thirteen hundred dollars. For the desk I'm looking at and that's, that's my request to the board is to, is to buy a new desk um for the office. So I can have something that's not from um the World War Two era.
One.
And so um, and like I told Norm, I'm not the type to spend extravagantly. Um, in fact, in conversations that we've had, Tim about, about adding, adding the administrative position. I've already talked to Austin about, I'm not sure the workload is there to add a position, so. Um, that's something that's not gonna come out of the revolving fund anytime soon. I don't think there's, there's the need to add a position to that office at this point. Um, so there's, there's nothing, there's nothing else that the revolving fund is, I can see that's gonna be used for. In fact. Um, when we had the senior volunteer coming in.
Oh yeah, it was great.
We're actually not gonna need to expend for her because she's done.
Excellent.
Because she did the A N R files while she was doing the A N R files. I organized the rest of the files. So I didn't need her to continue with the subdivisions and the special permit site plan approval. I managed to tackle those while she was doing the A N Rs and now all our files are in drawers and organized and that large bookcase is not even there anymore. So everything's in the file cabinets now in alphabetical order.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not roughing you up. I'm just saying. I, I just. Been through a few town administrators and I just don't want it to get to be a habit that. Our revolving fund is a kitty fund as a budget offset for the town because it's not what it's set up for. It's set up for the planning board. And if something comes up or we need legal advice or something along that. And if we do have a fund set up for support and, you know, we've got five hundred and that doesn't cover it, we've got something to go to.
Actually, I've been buying office supplies that haven't been coming out, that haven't been coming out of that, correct? The office supplies I've gotten so far. Yeah, so, so anyway, I'm not look, I'm looking for ways not to spend that revolving fund and this is the, this is something where. Um, I'm coming to the board to ask you, to ask permission to s- spend out of this, but um, like I said, I'm looking for ways to be very frugal. I've always had a small budget and stayed within it wherever I've been. In fact, I normally turn back money uh back to the town. This is the first town I've worked in that has a, a special revolving fund by the planning board.
Oh.
Normally I do have a budget with line items and I always turn back money at the end of the year. So I'm used to being frugal. I'm not an extravagant spender, so I don't think you have to, you definitely don't have to worry about that.
How much, how much is the desk worth?
I was just gonna ask. What do we trade it, what's the trade-in value?
If it's, if it's before World War Two, that metal's worth a lot of money, cause it's post.
Austin and I actually talked about that. He goes, do you think this desk could be reused by somebody? I'm, yes, it, the desk is not falling apart. It's just not practical.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to put it in an office where they may have an intern coming in who's gonna be doing work, yeah, you can have someone sit there.
What about Buckley's one? We could go over there and borrow that at night and bring it over and give it to uh, he's got an L-shaped Joe Buckley's.
And if it makes you feel any better, I'm actually going before the Concom on Monday, on next Tuesday night to request a new desk for the conservation agents. The same as mine, so we both have professional L-shaped desks, as her desk is even smaller than mine.
Have they talked about getting you an office? Has that been brought up with, with?
There are lots, there are lots of possibilities being floated around.
Okay.
So.
Alright, cause uh, from the board's perspective, with as much work as we have coming up for the planner. I, I really believe that we need an office.
Yeah, well.
That's, and, and your full time.
In a hurry.
The conservation agent is just.
Well.
One or two days a week?
Disgust, well, she, she actually just resigned.
Oh, well.
So she was ten hours a week.
The agent?
Yes. But there has been discussion about increasing that, which I think this town needs. I think the town needs to increase the conservation commission, the conservation agents' hours, absolutely.
Yeah.
Especially with the stormwater uh. Regulations that have been come down from the state.
I, you know, I, gee, I, I agree with you that the town budget shouldn't really be providing for the facilities, but. Uh. Even if for some reason whether we could get that, it's gonna be a delay.
I'm not gonna vote this down, dude. I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to make my point.
I suggest we authorize it and then request reimbursement.
Ooh, I like that one.
Whatever you gentlemen decide to do, that's your decision.
Boy, yeah, you know how it was for P M, you just.
Move it over.
Yeah, just retake from.
So even that, even that small three drawer cabinet, the gray cabinet that was in that corner. I, things have been organized to the point where I'm probably not even gonna need that. So not only did that, is that seven, eight foot bookcase gone, but that three drawer.
I'm telling you, don't give those up. You'll never get them back. You might wanna keep, I, I've learned one thing from being in, in trailers all my life is. You don't give up anything that you actually own until you're sure you don't need it, cause you'll never get it back.
Yeah.
Looked about it again, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'd make a motion to authorize. The town planner to work with the town administrator to purchase a desk. With a uh fifteen hundred dollar budget with, with reimbursement from the general fund. For that desk. You can add anything else you want, Norm, cause.
Well, we were authorizing an expenditure from.
Oh, from the revolving fund, I'm sorry. I missed that portion, yeah, from the revolving fund.
And for the replacement of three new ceiling tiles.
No, 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 that's, that's. That's gonna be D P W.
It's gonna end up being an open concept.
I mean, that's a, that's a Russian blockhouse over there to begin with anyhow, so.
I was thinking, well, maybe uh moving in with the town administrator's office.
Don't see, you're gonna get me wound up again.
Okay, so.
Need a second?
Second.
The motion.
Second.
I think you should get the town administrator's desk.
Oh, God. Any further discussion?
Give him the job, then he, he got a pay raise and everything else.
Oh, God.
I already fired him.
Okay.
You got a second?
Let me see.
Did you?
To meet the motion, did anyone second it?
Have you got the motion?
You can.
I second it.
We are trying to continue to see in there that it's for to be reimbursed in general.
Yeah, I think so.
My only concern is.
Just put, with a request.
Request, yeah.
Respectful request.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, just make sure that budget I sent you.
Yada, 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 three years later, I still don't have a new desk.
Yeah, no, 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 just put a fifteen hundred dollar actual request.
Alright, thank you. With a request, thank you.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, uh, do we have a second?
I did second the motion, second.
That's your first, that's your first second?
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent.
Okay, active subdivision update.
I haven't seen it.
I took a look at uh, basically our active subdivisions yesterday, I think it was. There's nothing happening at Bryce.
The last lot in Arrowhead I just saw got sold.
I don't know, there may still be one more. I, I don't know.
It was up, it was toward the front and it was this funny like uh, triangle lot that Cleed looks like he sold.
Well, see this, I don't know, on the law, on the lower end of Arrowhead, there, there are two houses and the thinking of space, I think.
Last meeting, I had the thing from Cleed, we just asked the question when he was gonna hot top it and.
Oh, maybe this is, this is the one.
I have them, I have a lot of stuff.
So that's it.
He's not that far from built out.
But if, if you wanna shoot me, I'll say.
He's just, he is ripping like mad.
One of the things here uh. That uh, Maker had put in here about active subdivision.
Is Quinn still shorthanded?
Probably.
Kevin doesn't have a P E. He needs a P E, bad. P mechanical P or civil or mechanical.
It's that what's holding.
He's doing it.
Oh, wow.
He, the owner is actually the engineer.
Yeah, I know, I know, and that's.
Without Carl, Carl was his go-to civil P E and uh, he doesn't, he's, he's like me at Everso. We can't find P Es that are mechanical or civil. Next impossible.
We don't know that he doesn't have one. We haven't heard from him in two months at least.
And has he gone around to the subdivisions to just to verify, you know, how far they got, what's going on?
I have my doubts.
Well, let me check in with him.
Yeah.
And see where those stand.
And see if he's got, if, if he's got any help, because that.
Yeah.
Cause we're not his only customer.
No.
Oh, no.
I know that.
I know, I know he's been out to Harmony Place to check that out, cause they've started site work, so.
Yeah.
But I, I, I'll check in with him on these, yeah.
And, and, one of the things, I gotta get back to Bryce Lemon is uh, show me the money set aside for each lot. He was supposed to be setting aside money for each lot sold.
In Brittenell Estates?
Right.
Oh, I thought it was Brittenell Estates.
And I don't want that. How did Addison lay it out on the special permit? You remember how that was? Therefore, I asked our town planner to take a look.
Have to take a look at these.
Okay.
It's a condition, yeah, there's a section in the conditions under special conditions that there was a, supposed to go into like basically a bankbook.
That's fine. Yeah, I can check that out.
But I wanna, I wanna know how he labeled it because he, I was going to uh put it towards. Open space. He turned around and used it and, and said something about.
Well, does the decision, does the decision detail how the funding is supposed to be?
Don't remember, that's, I mean, that was how many.
That's why I wanna find out how it's laid out in there.
Okay.
If it's not.
If it's not, then that could be an issue.
Yeah.
I, I don't believe you'll find it in there.
Okay.
I just don't remember how it was laid. I mean, Jesus, that's probably seven years ago. For Bryce Lemon, right? Yeah.
Yes.
I think I have that somewhere. The only other thing I was gonna ask, we can add for active is. No, it's, it's actually is Hilltop and then the second one was uh Noble Hill. Because now that that's been blessed and saying it's a subdivision, I'd like to keep that on there so we can ask Clee, where you at, buddy?
Noble Hill and.
Hilltop.
Hilltop.
One that's bothering me a little bit more than that is the Forest Hill Drive extension. Because.
True extension.
Yeah, I'm having the same thing.
It's not Cleed though.
No, it's not Cleed.
Oh, that's why I was, I was trying to place, where the hell is?
School area.
Forest Hill Drive.
Yeah.
You guys approved it over the summer?
Right. It's like a two lot subdivision.
So what, what's?
Heard that a while ago.
Yeah.
I, that was a.
I don't believe, among other things, I don't believe we received, we received a covenant.
Okay.
Or bond request or.
So it shouldn't even be active. It should basically be an approved plan and that's as far as it should go.
Okay, let me, let me check on that.
But I don't know.
Okay.
He shouldn't be, there should be no building permits issued or anything like that.
I can, I can check on that status tomorrow.
Okay.
Cause I, I haven't seen any building permits come through for that anyway.
I guess that should be number five then. Okay.
So it's just, that seems like it's one of these that.
Could slip through the cracks and go.
I'll get on these things tomorrow.
Okay, uh, correspondence?
Yep, just uh C M R P C has a pollution workshop on December eighteenth, I believe. Tamika, that's uh six to eight P M. Yeah, regional, Robin Regional High School.
Uh, don't get me started on the NOx that comes out of those damn cars.
So I'm sensing a theme with you, Tim.
Yeah, I'm a coal guy. I'm a power plant guy.
Don't get me started.
Yeah, this, because I fought this for years about everybody was, the coal plants were producing NOx and killing people. When you do the study, you find out automobiles put, put more NOx out than any, than any combination of power plants in the United States, but anyhow, I'll shut up now.
Planning on polluting anything?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So.
Show these cars here.
So, Tim, I can see it on your gravestone. Realize Tim Narwhal, don't get him started. So, Tim, I could see it on your gravestone. Here lies Tim Narwall. Don't get him started.
Yeah, because it's.
Don't start. That would be a cable access show for you. Don't get me started.
That's the problem of being German and Scottish. It's the worst combination of a temper and.
You know, they've been asking uh, asking me if I wanna go to it, and it's a question of.
I actually did wanna go to this one, because I'd be sitting there, listen, quit with the propaganda. Let's see the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I know, they're gonna show you.
The key with pollution is, don't cut the damn trees down, and we'll all be good.
Right.
Cut the crap. Do you know that you're leaving the old trees up for.
No, 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 you can still do cleanups.
Can we not go off on too much of a tangent here? If you guys wanna stick around after and.
Why would we turn left there, today?
Town Planner Report.
Okay, Town Planner's report, so office, uh, obviously, I'd, I'd need an update on the office situation, um, what we're trying to do insofar as organization. Um, we do have a special permit application, um, that we're gonna have a public hearing on January ninth for an accessory dwelling unit five Madison Avenue, and I had a gentleman come in, I forget the address,